Seeing as we have a quorum and a town moderator here, I call the meeting, the special town meeting to order.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen, thank you. Okay. Yes, I have a sign, I have the sign warrant, so we're good to go. The name is Pownell, Massachusetts, you're hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Plainfield, qualified to vote in town affairs, assemble at Plainfield Town Hall, three forty-eight Main Street on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM, thereabouts, then and there to act on the following articles. Okay, I'm not going to get all the articles this time, but we'll do the nice, the truth. First article is to see if the town will vote to have its elected town clerk become an appointed town clerk. This was inserted by the select board. Do I have a motion?
So I'm.
Oh, second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Teresa?
As a former town clerk of nine years, I don't agree with this, but I will give you a reason why I don't agree. Now clerk's job ninety-nine percent is handled by the Secretary of State's office, it's not town-related. She is required to be answer to the states almost everything she does. It doesn't matter if the selectmen are her boss, there's the answer to them, she answers to the Secretary of State. And I don't know if any of you know what the sec- the town clerk's job actually entails, but I made a list, so I wouldn't forget anything. These are just titles. She handles all electors, handle town, for the town, she handles all state, she handles all nationalists. She handles the electronic, that is commanded by the national government. She handles all dog lycies, she handles all barriers, she handles all marriage deaths, first year difference. She is a very attentive. She is also handles all, I mean, huge list, I don't want to forget anything. She handles all zoning bylaws, which this will be, if it comes to a vote at the town annual, this will require a two-thirds vote. Because it will be a bylaw change, with this one and the next one. It's not just a cut and dry. The Attorney General's office has to approve it. It will not be just us saying, oh, we want to do this. That's not how it works. That is a thirty-day job, once that is done, after that two-thirds vote at the annual. She does master street list. She does one that probably the selectmen don't know, if two of them are here, it is a tie vote, the town clerk is required to make the tiebreaker. And people know that. She is a holder of all town records for every single meeting. Every single committee meeting is required to hand in their news to her. Every single annual meeting, every special town meeting, has to be recorded in town books, which are then kept in safe. Those are just some of the things she's required to do. She does all the registry of your votes through mail-in, all the deletes, she must get them from the registry of deeds, not deeds, registry motor vehicles for all your, anybody who registers through that. Those are just some of the things that she does. This is not a cut and dry job that anybody can just walk in and say they're going to do it. And I know that, because I walked away from this job nine, after nine years, because you're in my face and saying, oh, you're just a servant. I got those calls over and over and over again, and I had enough. People don't respect what that job is. Not anybody can do it, because there are so many levels. And it takes a lot of time. It's not the four hours on Wednesday morning, it is almost every day. She's been in that office yesterday, today. She'll be there tomorrow, she'll be there probably Thursday. It's not four hours a week, it is twenty-four seven. Somebody dies, she's got to get a death certificate, she's got to get a burial, blood, death. It's not for everybody, and it's not an easy job. I'm sorry it's so long.
Teresa?
Go ahead.
Ward, East Village twenty-seven, South Union. I'm also going to vote against that warrant, because we have somebody who's experienced, he's done the job for eleven years. It is a hard job, it's very technical. When I go to the office, I see a lot of turnover, but Ruth has been doing this for eleven years, she's expert at it. And I don't think it's time to start looking for somebody else. We have somebody who's experienced, who knows how to do the job, it's a hard job. She, I think, all the town employees do more than their hours are paid for, as does Ruth. So I think, and also I think we should show some loyalty to the people that work for our town, so I'm going to vote against this.
Go ahead.
Sandy Moran from Bow Street. And I would just like to say, I'm a little bit tired of seeing all of our jobs being taken from people out of town. We have run this town for many years with our own townspeople. And it seems like now we are, we, we, people don't leave, we have people in town that are capable of doing a job. And we do have people in town that are capable of doing the jobs. And we've had a lot of turnover, even with our appointed positions. Particularly, as one example is a treasurer, how many treasurers have we had in this town since we've had an appointed position? And they're from out of town, which means that they work from home. You go into the town office, you cannot usually find the person that is on the job there. Not even one day a week, you have to make an appointment or you have to make a phone call, or you email. And I'm sorry, but I'm used to being able to go in and talk person to person to whomever is in the office. And when they're from town, they are in the office most of the time. And when we have people from out of town, they want to work from, from home, and you don't see them.
Send it in the back there, the basket, can't see who is, who is this? Steve.
I just want to agree with everyone else. I don't think we should be appointing any of these positions to someone from out of town. If I need something from the town clerk, I can call Ruth if I need something notarized, if I need official paperwork or whatever, Ruth is right there to help get that for me. You can go into the town hall and talk to her. The building commissioner, for example, is only here once a week, and even then, you can't always get a hold of him. So I think it should stay the way it is, elected official from in-town.
Steve? In the back there.
Hillary Leaks, Sandy at Grant Street. I agree that these are important positions, and it would be ideal if they could all be filled by people from town. However, during my time on the select board, I watched it become increasing more, increasingly more difficult to find people who were willing to do the jobs in town, because it's, it's a lot of time constraints, and when you have to actually make the living, you can't volunteer all of your time at town to sit at the desk, or, you know, and it's, it would be nice if we could just go in and everybody who did one of the jobs was there at our disposal. Unfortunately, it's not the reality at this point. So, as much as I would like it to stay the same, I am in agreeance with this, because moving forward, we have to have somebody fill the position. And if we can't fill these positions with people from town, then we have to be able to look outside of the bounds of town.
Thank you, Hillary.
Further to what Hillary was saying, this past year, we had significant room, we had, I think it was five or six positions turnover in the town offices, well, or towns staff positions. And part of the problem is exactly what Hillary said. In only two of the six positions, did we even have any, and we only had one person in town who applied for the position. And so that means that you're going to have a lot longer period of time without that position being filled. And with respect to our town treasurer, I understand your point, Sandy, about wanting to be able to go in and see somebody, but there are also, there is also the benefit, that because he is the treasurer for four towns, Plainfield being one of them. He, he comes in, he already knows the job, he knows all of the vendors that all the Hilltowns deal with. He was able to save us more than his annual salary in his first month upon the job. And he's young, so he will be able to stay here longer, because we don't have to negotiate a mutual agreement with some other town to share a staff member. He's simply choosing to work at four different part-time jobs, and he's put together a livable wage that he can sustain. So I think that, that with some of the economic factors and the changes that are taking place in the world of employment, we need to become a little bit more flexible in how we think about who we're going to hire for what position. I mean, this is a risky question to ask at this point. Is anyone unhappy with our new highway superintendent?
It's not relevant to the.
Come on, stay gone.
It's not relevant to the article about.
It's the debate about in-town or out-of-town hires.
And I would say that's only, it was not what I'm saying.
Second, I want us to keep on track. I understand that this is, that this article is a part of a larger problem in the town. An attempt to solve part of the larger problem in town, but the article on the floor is to see if the vote to have an elected town clerk become an appointed town clerk of the town. So I'd like the comments and questions to be directed specifically to that article.
I would be to appoint fifty-three, South Union Street. I, I think it probably makes sense for this town meeting to pass this article, because it will require a two-thirds vote at the annual town meeting. So we will have the opportunity to actually let more voters in town decide the ultimate decision that is made here, and it will give time between now and then for information to be shared for how that position will work, and how it will be, what the, if there are changes to the job description. It'll give us a chance to really think this through beyond just whether or not it's elected or appointed. And there's no reason to say that if it is elected or appointed, that there's going to be a change in staff. It just means it gives the town the opportunity to make a change if they want to, without having a special election or going through some other process. So I, I think, I think this is step one, and it would be in the town's best interest and allow us to get this step two.
Thank you, Peter.
Bob Nelson of Leventon Street. I'm opposed to both questions, one and two. I link them up then together, because my comments are, will be for both. My comments have absolutely nothing to do with the current hovers of those positions. And I, I read the article, and I didn't see anything about out of town, that's not the question at hand. But I'm opposed to it, because one, by eliminating the vote of the residents of Plainfield for these positions, you're eroding our democracy.
Yes.
That's my first comment. Second comment is, the way this article was written seems to be flawed to me. At best, it's incomplete. Who are the appointees? Who, I mean, who makes the appointments? Doesn't say. And I don't know where you get your information, but it says nothing about bringing it up at town, annual town meeting. It stands on its own. How long are the terms for? Do the people that do the appointee, appointing have the right to terminate that position? Doesn't, doesn't say. How can you vote for something if you don't know what you're voting for? And lastly, has to do with, and again, I'm reading the article, it says nothing about annual town meeting. But to bring this up, something that will change our gov- could possibly change our government, and how we form our government forever, or until it comes up again, how can you bring this up at a special town meeting in February, and not entertain it and discuss it at the annual town meeting, where the attendance is much greater? So I say, vote yes for democracy by voting no on articles one and two.
I'd like to use the moderator's prerogative here. This article, I think Bob makes a very good point about this article being incomplete. In order to change the, our town clerk from elected position to an appointed position, it would require an amendment to our town bylaws. This article is not an amendment to our town bylaws. If this article said to see if the town will vote to have its elected town clerk, clerk becoming an appointed town clerk of the town, by amending the town bylaws, and then specifically said what the, what the bylaw was that we were amending, doubt would be appropriate. So I'm going to say that, has this been through town council?
It's been through KP Law.
And they, and they okayed the wording on that, this article?
I wasn't the one that was handling it, but.
Who handled it?
I, I think it's Shannon, she's interested.
I would like to suggest we table this, this article. It is, at this point, it is incomplete, it's, it is, or we could, again, it says.
Can I just add one thing?
Yep.
I did have the conversation with KP Law on the process. And we have to have a special town meeting at least sixty days before the annual town meeting in order to put a warrant on the annual town meeting. So we're not preempting the annual town meeting, this isn't the final vote. This is the first step that you have to do, before you can consider it at an annual town meeting.
So I will entertain, I will entertain a motion to amend the main emotion, the main motion, to, to specify that in here. To, to specify, to, if someone has a motion that they would like to put on the table, which specifies that to see if the town will vote to have its elected town clerk, become an appointed town clerk of the town, by bringing, by bringing an article at, at annual town meeting to amend the town bylaws appropriately.
That's actually what this is for, is a referendum. It's a, this is a, to read a referendum on the town ballot.
Right, but it doesn't, but, but the article does not say that.
It's not, it's not worded correct.
So, is, does anyone want to move to? And what was the wording of that be?
Jesus, I don't remember, you just said it.
Okay.
What you said.
Title, we have to have selected, I know, but I'm the moderator, so. I know, we entertain motions, I don't, don't actually make them.
Will vote to put it on the warrant for the annual town meeting, or to make a referendum? To have a referendum, vote on the annual town election ballot, and to have a warrant at the annual town meeting. And that was part of the. Yes, so if we don't vote that, then it won't be on the town warrant. Then it won't be, it's dead. And this kind of shows you what happens when you don't have to train people in town decisions. This example.
Just come from town, but you're not trained either.
Well. I, I mean, I knew the process, I didn't know the wording, you know, and I didn't draft. But, but what I'm saying is that, that we have a lot of resources that can support us in learning what we need to do to comply with Mass General law. So that's why we called KP Law and asked what the process was, and this was the process they told us. I don't draft, I don't draft warrants. We drafted that warrant, more than. And Shannon, okay, so that's, that's an appointed position. Okay.
So.
You want to give me that piece of paper, Brian?
So this is, this is what I believe you said. So there's a, there's a motion on, motion to amend on, on table, which is to amend Article One by pending at the end of the existing article, by having a referendum at the annual town election, and by entering an article on the annual town meeting warrant to amend the town bylaws.
No, Brian, this will require a majority vote, right?
Yes. So that's, so that's, that's what you. So we have a motion, do we have a second for the amendment?
Second for this.
Okay, all right, now, first of all, this, I know this is getting complicated, but, Bob made a really good point about the validity of this article, so. Is there any discussion on the, the amendment to the article, on amending this article, as, as I just breath? Yes?
Yes, I'm Robert Fusco from seventy-four Prospect Street. I'm so confused by the discussion that we have had here, other than when I was listening to Hillary and to Ms. Cole, that I, I think there's no real understanding of what the article implies in terms of what this is going to resolve. And I'll give you, and that's really where I think the discussion should begin, not by amending articles, but by what does this actually imply within the context of the need that the town clerk has to satisfy versus the ability to pick, pick one, either by election or by selection. And I'll give you just a brief example, voting. For the last fourteen years I've been doing the voting, and in the last five years, the time element, the concentration element, early voting, et cetera, et cetera, has more than six times the amount of time, to eight times the amount of time it took from two-ten to two-fourteen to fifteen. Now, I don't see how, if, when, by bringing up a treasurer who saves us fourteen thousand dollars or whatever, and has four towns, is going to give us a clerk who can do the same thing. There is no way, under any circumstance, and with all respect to Ms. Leaks and all respect to Ms. Cole, I don't think they have an understanding, and I think that has to be cleared up before we start messing around with articles, because that's what should be discussed here, and that's, and then from that should come the article. By superimposing us with an article, gives absolutely no credibility toward the actual function. And I think that that's really what's missing. And, and so by your wanting to amend the article, my sense is that doesn't do squat, as it were. I know legally it might make it a little more bearable, but it really doesn't do anything to inform the public as to what it is we're actually voting on. And, and I think that is clear, very clear to me tonight, listening to people talk. Now, I know this is a legal thing, and it's about articles, I'm not a lawyer. We have a very good lawyer here, actually, who tells me sometimes what to do when it comes to election law, because it changes so frequently. So I just think that we should really inform the public before we start writing articles. We have a media that can do that, we have a newspaper that can do that, and we should start working on it. And when Ms. Cole said, we have resources. I think, I mean, there are a lot of resources, I've done a lot of research on the transformation from elected to appointed positions, and they can do that too. And I think that that should be done, and that should be clearly articulated to the voters, and then, and then bring up the amendments. That's, that's awesome.
Thank you.
This doesn't have anything to do with, like, terminating positions, it's just in the future, say Ruth wants to retire, nobody in town runs for town clerk, what do you do?
I, I think that, that's very true. I think that's very true, but the bottom line is, the bottom line is that the only people who are going to know that are people who are gunning for that position, who have degrees, who have, and they may or may not be community-based. And I think that what you're probably intimating is that we're looking for a workforce of town clerks. And what I wanted to point to you is that the reason why the town clerk is voted, to be local and to be independent, is because of the corruption that took place at the turn of the last century. And, and I think that that's so important to me, to keep voting, the integrity of the voting position in the town, observed by the town, and, and, you know, when I see all the select people in the last, I'd say, five years, come and go, some of them sort of six months in the position, ones are fourteen months. This is crazy, you know, it's like, you have a brainstorm, you come up with a conclusion, and where's it, where does it land us? It leaves to a person serving a term and leaving. And I think that, I, I understand where that's coming from, is that the technocracy, that's what we're heading toward, and that may be where we go, but right now, it's not necessary, and I don't see any reason. I think what we should do is inform the public first.
I'd like to make one other point, it's not just about elected or appointed, it's about the applicant pool.
So. Okay, I'm, I'm going to stop you there. The article on the table, in specifically about elected and appointed, that is all that is in the article at this point.
Okay.
We have, we have, we have a, we have a motion to amend that would add some additional information to the article that would, that would say that we're going to do this at, at annual town meeting, at the annual town election. But the current article has only one thing, and that is to see if the town will vote to have its elected town clerk become an appointed town clerk, that's all that is in the current article.
So Brian, you said, if we vote against that article, then it won't be brought up at town?
That is correct.
Okay, good to know.
Delila Madison, Almocless Summit Street, one ninety-seven Summit Street. My question is, are there other towns around that have appointed town clerk positions, and how has that worked for them? I don't, I'm, I'm hearing all these things that people are saying, and I am curious myself. I don't understand it well enough to know how it works differently when somebody's appointed to the position or elected.
Go ahead, Teresa?
Again, Teresa, back here, I can answer that. Ashfield has one, Row has one, an elected, not an elected, has an appointed town clerk. It works to some extent. And also Charlemagne has one. There is a battlefield between the town clerks, the select board, and the Secretary of State's office. Everybody tells the board town clerk what she's, or he's supposed to be doing. I'm your boss, I'm your boss. And there's only the Secretary of State. Doesn't matter who hires them, the Secretary of State is their boss.
How does it work in the town, I guess?
The town.
Become an appointed position or board by a majority vote of the annual or special town meeting, and acceptance by the voters of the town at the annual town elections. Provided, however, that any vote by a special town meeting, taken under the provisions of this section, shall take place at least sixty days prior to. prior to the acceptance of the voters at the annual town election. For purposes of this section, the positions of town treasurer, collector of taxes, may be combined into one position and become an appointed position in the manner provided. Such acceptance by the voters shall be in the form of the following question to be placed on the official ballot. Shall the town vote to have its elected title of officer board become an appointed title, uh, become an appointed title of officer board of the town? Yes or no? If a majority of votes cast and answered a said question is in the affirmative, said office or board shall become appointed in accordance with the provisions of this section. Any incumbent of such office or board serving at the time of acceptance by the voters shall continue, shall continue to hold said office and perform the duties thereof until the expiration of the term for which said individual was elected or until said individual otherwise vacates such office. Provided, however, that any individual elected to an office or board which becomes an appointed officer board at the same election under the provisions of the section shall hold said office and perform the duties thereof until the appointment to said office is otherwise made under the provisions of the section. Such appointment shall be made by the Board of Selection selection for a term not to exceed three years unless such mode of appointment or term is otherwise provided by law. Okay, so, under this statute, what we are doing right now is taking the vote with the required wording, which means I'm going to rule that the proposed amendment is out of order, and so we give a few more of the amendment. However, it does not say that we have to vote again at the annual town meeting. It only says that it would be on the town election, annual town election. So, this is our, this is the chance, right now, we have a yes or no vote for the town to determine whether this is something that the town would like to do. If the town says no, then that's the end of it for now. If, if the town says yes, then it will go to annual, to the annual town election, where it will be on the ballot for, for every registered voter to express their opinion. And at that point, that item on the, uh, on the election will have to specify the wording for the, for the town bylaw change. And it all, whatever details there are in there. So today's, today's vote under the statute is essentially to determine whether or not we move forward with, with changing a town clerk from an elected to appointed position.
Whether we have referendums to do that on the town election ballot.
Whether we move forward towards doing that.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I still didn't get an answer to my question, because it does concern me greatly.
What was your question again?
What if no one wants to run for this office?
That is, that's currently a problem for all of our town meetings.
So if nobody, we would then not have a town clerk, is that what you're telling me?
We would have to, we would have to elect someone, but we are required to have a town clerk.
To run.
Uh, then we would not be able to run the town of Plainfield. In order to run the town of Plainfield, we are requiring of a town clerk, a town moderator, and a number of other positions.
Right.
Uh, if nobody in the town is willing to run for a town clerk, then at that point, we cannot have any town meetings. Well, we should, we can have town meetings, but we, there's a whole lot of stuff that we can no longer submit to the state. Elections would stop until we had a, a town clerk pro town. It would be a mess.
Yeah.
Roberto?
Roberto Littlebridge, one Pleasant Street. So I heard corruption, and I hear what Teresa's talking about. I think there might be an element here we might be missing about if we, if the select board appoints this position and potentially that person doesn't answer to the select board, maybe there is potential that this person could go a little rogue in their job duties, and we didn't elect them, and now they're somehow maybe working against the town. Is that kind of what you're saying, Teresa, that that's kind of the technical? If they're not elected from town by the citizens, and they're appointed, but they don't answer to the select board, can that person potentially, no, you don't think that's, I just want to make sure that that wasn't.
Secretary's office is very, very strict. Their computers sitting up in that office, and you're on, you have special access to that computer, they watch everything, even the marriage statistics and death certificates are done, they stay on. That's not possible.
And then my other response, just the genie. I think the, the beauty of our elected positions is that when we have a vacancy and we know that we have to fill it with townspeople, come hell or high water, we find a neighbor, we drag someone by their shirt, and we make them, you know, hey, you can do this, and that's, that's kind of how it works. If we take that opportunity away, that vacuum, then, yeah, it doesn't have the same vitality. So it's unpleasant as it seems sometimes, that we're a little thin on numbers. Sometimes we just, we just make it work. I mean, the town population isn't going the way it's overall, had filled, and you've had more young people coming past. Someone will come along. So I, I won't worry about that, so.
Thank you, thank you, Roberto. One, one thing that many towns do is to have an elected town clerk who is the, the, the town official who answers to the Secretary of State and, and all, all of that, and have a town clerk assistant, which is a hired, appointed position, and have the, and have enough money in the budget so that the town clerk assistant actually does all the work. That's, that's, I'm just saying, that's what many towns do where they are unable to get someone to, to run for the elected position.
Okay, that makes sense.
Because who wants to run for an elected position where you get paid peanuts and work way more hours than you're supposed to?
Right.
Uh, so, we should just, you know, that, that's always, that's, that's always an opportunity in an elected position, is that you can have an appointed assistant.
Teresa, one fifty-one Pleasant Street, I have two things I want to say. The first thing is that, that's how our assessors are done, right? So it's not so funny that our own assessor is like that. So we run it that way. Uh, and the second thing is, uh, that a lot of this, to me, is about whether we pay fair wages. And I think that the chance that we will pay fair wages is higher if we put the position on the job market than if we don't put the position on the job market. I think we pay peanuts, and I don't think we should be paying peanuts. So that is my opinion, and I don't, you know, I think that all this ideas about our town clerk being available in the middle of the night, if you need to have to bury your loved one, well, I think that if, if that is wrong. That is morally wrong to expect from someone to work like that for the peanuts.
I gotta call on a Sunday, say we will go to the office and make up the merits.
Right, so I think that that is wrong, and, and uh, I think there's other kinds of things that you cannot ask of someone who's working for you, and you should not be asking for someone who's working for you.
Thank you, pleasure. Um, I, before I go on, are there any questions or comments about, specifically about this article that have not already been said? Does anyone have anything new to add about this article? Because it's, it, it feels like we now understand the purpose of this article, which is essentially to decide whether or not to put it on the, on the town referendum. Uh, and we, uh, have heard a lot of, a lot of comments for and against it. We, this is a majority vote, so we're not going to take the vote right now, but is, does anyone have any additional uh, things that they would like to say? Ruth?
Yes, I'm Ruth Osgood, I live at sixty-four North Central Street. I am your town clerk, I've been your town clerk now for, since two thousand and fourteen. I took the job over at the request of, um, I think it was Paul who contacted me and wanted to know if I would do the position in interim because Teresa had resigned. I was elected again that year. I think I took the job over in February, and at the May election, I was elected as the town clerk officially. I've lived in this town for over fifty years. I'm about as Plainfield as you can get. I am not in favor of this. And quite frankly, as many of you know, I've been pretty upset about this. And what I think I'm upset the most about, and hurt, is that this board here never once came to me and talked to me and said, "Ruth, what are your plans? You know, your term is up this year, are you gonna run again, are you gonna quit, are you gonna resign? What are you gonna do?" Not one time. And Ben, I, Ben is a friend of mine, unfortunately, but he's all right. I'm also a, a customer of his, because I have a Kubota. I confronted him and said, "What are you doing?" I thought that I had the courtesy and the respect to be given some sort of answer. Because quite frankly, what it has looked like to me and other people is that this, this is a land grab. They're taking away your right as citizens of this town to vote for your elected officials. It's a land grab. The other thing is, is that this is classic, if you want to get rid of somebody, this is what you do. And then you put your own person in there. And I feel that this has been a personal attack on me, that I am not a very good town clerk, and, and one of the board members told me that to my face. So yes, I'm hurt, and I am upset about it, and I do not report to anybody in this town. I report to the, the voters of Plainfield. And if you don't like me, then run somebody against me. Or assassinate me, whatever. I took the job over, I loved the job. Absolutely loved it. I don't feel so good about things anymore, because I don't feel that I have been treated in a very kind way. And I don't know why you felt that that was necessary to do to me. Because I certainly can talk. So, that's what I got to say. And, um, I don't feel it, that people do not understand, this job has many, many hats. My posted hours are Wednesdays nine to noon and Thursday six to eight. That is, that is bare minimum. I am there all day on Wednesdays, I'm there many other days of the week. And what I get paid is peanuts. I get very little money a month. And, um, it, it's worth a lot more money than what I'm being paid. And I think that I will ask for an increase on the town budget this year. But, um, if you're looking at to hire a town clerk, you're not just gonna find one out there on the street. It's not a vocation that you go to tech school for, or that you learn it in high school or college, it's not. You should have paid attention in civics class if you want to know something about it. But, um, I, I think it should stay elected, it's one of the oldest offices in this state. And, um, I'm against making it appointed, because I feel it, what, what is gonna happen is, sure, I can apply for my job. And if, if the rumors and all the little backstabbing gossip is true that they want to get rid of me, they're gonna find a reason why I'm not qualified, even though I've done the job for eleven years. I'm not qualified. This happened in this town once before, about ten, twelve years ago. So, that's what I got to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have anything to add before we vote on this?
I have a try. I am getting more and more confused. I thought this is all about giving us a possibility in case we cannot find somebody local who would come first naturally, so that we have somebody in the office, you yourselves said that it's going to be a mess if we don't have anybody, so there you go. It is not taking anything away from Ruth. She's been fantastic, and we should all thank her. It is just about giving us another possibility, or am I wrong?
So it's, um, it gives the select board the possibility of appointing someone. It takes away from town voters
Yes.
the ability to choose someone.
Yes.
So that's.
If we have to vote on it, if we do vote on it, then we all.
No, the, 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 the vote would be, the vote is today, and at the annual town election.
Yeah, so we have another vote then.
But.
If it passes today.
If it passes today, and it passes on the town election by two thirds, then, uh, at that point, the town voters no longer choose their town clerk. The select board would appoint a town clerk for the voters.
So then that's not a good thing, because we need to have a possibility if we can't find somebody. We are such a small community, and I don't think, I mean, with what you're describing, what is involved, first of all, I agree she should be paid more. Secondly, I think that we, you cannot knock on people's doors and say you want to be town clerk when there is so much work involved. So you need to have somebody who has the, not only the dedication, but also the possibility of working that many hours.
In terms of your, to, to address your, um, your point about it giving, you know, giving us the possibility if we can't find anyone to run. That has never happened.
Yeah.
That has never happened, that has never been a problem.
Doesn't mean that it couldn't happen.
It pretty much, I mean, but, but just, but if we, if it became an appointed position, you have the same problem. You might be unable to find anyone who you could hire at the, at the wages that we're, that we're paying.
Well, you better pay more.
Unfortunately, the town doesn't have the money to pay every, to pay all of the town officials for all of the hours that they work. I, I am very, very happy that, um, twenty years or so ago, this town raised my salary from fifteen dollars to a hundred dollars a year. That's, that, you know, that, that means that the amount of money I get paid as a town official uh, is now enough to, to actually send me a check as opposed to all of it going away in taxes. But the reality is, and I'll stop talking, because I'm, I'm, I don't want to monopolize the conversation, but the reality is that we are, our town is run primarily by volunteers. And even the people who receive a stipend, that's courtesy, and even the people who receive salaries, we, it's a courtesy too. Because we are not, we, we as a town do not have the funds to pay everyone what they should be getting for their jobs they're doing, so.
Somebody we.
Yes, so, in the back there.
Six hundred and ninety-one Summit Street. Um, I'm also on the Board of Health, and like Roberto said, I was talked into getting onto the Board of Health by Ruth. And I, I agree that, you know, people step up when they have to. And on another note, I just wanted to ask why it's only the town clerk and the tree warden that run the warrant tonight, and not all the elected officials?
That, that would be most of them, I think, and who else is elected in the town of? Oh, moderators.
School.
I'll say something.
Just, 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 just.
Kimberly Long, fifty-three South Union. I've gone through a bunch of evolutions of turning elected positions to appointed. I did the treasurer thirty years ago, and Fran Allison, the woman who's called my purchase and first moved to town with the treasurer. Anyway, there's a long history of trying very hard to attract qualified people to do the work of this. That's clear, and we've heard a lot about how that happens, whether it's arm twisting or new folks coming in with energy. My opinion about the position of town clerk is that just, the office of clerk in any corporation is the most powerful position in the corporation, because it certifies the facts of what happened in the meetings of the entity. So in a municipality, this is a very important complex, as Teresa has listed off, highly evolving, uh, position. I'm, I agree that, um, removing the direct connection to the voters is, is a problem. the direct connection to the voters is a, is a problem. Uh, in terms of the fact that we have direct democracy is so precious. We should be preserving that as the best we can. And to have direct connection to the most important position seems important for the voters to have a hand in. At the same time, I think we have to have an environment in towns where um folks can be free from intimidation if they have feedback about any office being performed good or bad. Folks should be encouraged. Like, I would think we should all be excited if we had a contested election. When I was a select board, that was the thing I was very focused on, is to try to see if we could have choices in this town so that people could make informed decisions about whom that might best serve the, the role. I think that is, if we're talking about succession planning and worry about other people being able to fill this position after Ruth decides. We should be doing a lot more that is not about changing the bylaw. We should be encouraging folks to get to know what the job is like and to prepare themselves to run for office when it becomes available or even when it doesn't. We should have two choices this may maybe. It should not be a problem that people run against another person. That is, it should be a good thing. And I think that's the job of this community is to make that happen.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
Um, I was just gonna say that as a select board member, this was not about Ruth, at least on my behalf. And um, that it is, was just expanding possibilities in case there was a situation where we didn't find anybody in town. It's pretty much that simple.
I agree, and that's what I'm saying about. Sorry.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
Yes, I, I have a, I have a comment. Point of, additional point of clarification. I agree with what you were saying and I think that a lot of the motivation for this at this moment is the fact that we had so many positions turnover in the last year and we had so few townspeople who applied for them. And, and so, and in some cases, we only had one person at all apply for them. And it struck me, one thought that I had, was that if it was an appointed position, then you could recruit other towns, you could recruit a good town clerk from another town that only worked part-time and they could do what our treasurer has done by putting together.
Can't do that.
Why not?
Because the town clerk has to be that we election in the room town. They can't share.
No, but if it's not elected.
It doesn't matter. Their town during the election.
I understand, I understand.
Yes, Ed?
I've been to a town caucus for a few years. And that, and that's all come, um, caucus. We always find somebody to fill the job. Maybe once out of ten years might not find somebody to fill this job. You always seem to find someone. That should be back to, to repeat, can vote for.
Thank you, Ed. Is there anyone who has not already spoken who would like to speak? Yes, bud?
On weeks, AD, Grantery, um, one of your elected assessors, elected member of the board of health, volunteer servant on the fire department. Just wanna state, I, you know, I came in here tonight thinking maybe this was a reasonable idea in terms of staffing. But listening to largely in part Teresa and others, uh, I, I vote that we take, that we just squash this down and leave it. I have no doubt in my mind and in my heart that if nobody ran to fill Ruth's position in her absence, that the sun would come up tomorrow, just playing the best. No, no different than if nobody applies. And um, in, in terms of our overall democracy here in the state of Massachusetts, uh, I believe that it is important at this time that we leave this position elected and not.
Thank you, Ron. With that, I'm going to call the question. Uh, would all those uh in favor of the article, please raise your hand and say aye? Would all those opposed to the article, please raise your hand and say nay? The nays have it. All right, Article Two. See if the town will vote to have its elected tree warden become an appointed tree, uh, tree warden. So again, this is under the same statute as Article One. Uh, and again, because our tree warden is uh in our, is in our town bylaws, it would require a two-thirds vote. Uh, and would need to be changed at, yeah, it would need to be a referendum on the town elections. So, uh, do I, is, do I have a motion on this article?
I move that we do not even vote on this article.
You have a motion to table and. Well, I gotta get to the word that.
Let me move to just have discussion about it before we.
Unfortunately, we, until the motion is, is, is moved and, and seconded, there is nothing on the table to discuss.
This article.
Okay, is there a second? All right, any discussion?
I have a question. Laurie Israel, twenty-seven South Union. Has there been difficulty in having, in finding somebody to take this position?
I mean, contested position.
No, has, so there hasn't been a difficulty in doing this?
The last four years, it's been an elected position and there's been at least two people running.
We're serious, one fifty-one Pleasant Street. Um, I'd like to make a comment that doesn't directly address that, uh, which is that I believe the biggest problem with the tree warden position is two. Uh, one is that it is an elected position every year, that the term is one year. And that one solution to this problem could be to make it a three-year term, like all the other positions, I think, or most of the other positions.
The moderator, you were named one year election?
Okay, so well, I'm not speaking to that, but I'm speaking to, because what that means is that every year, somebody has to either run again or some people have to go find someone. And so that greatly enhances the difficulty of filling a position, whether you want it to be elected or not. And the second thing is that there's this immediate, I thought, that, oh, the, 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 um, the highway superintendent should be the tree warden. And for part of what the tree warden does, that would be the solution. Would be convenient. It would be loading more work onto an already full-time job, I think. But, but in any case, even if it doesn't, for part of it, it would be the solution. But the tree warden has two parts of the job. The one part of the job is to take care that the trees, that the shade trees do not become a hazard in the road. And the other part of it is to take care of the straight shade trees, to make sure that we, to the environment. To, to make sure that we have an attractive environment with trees in it. Uh, and that part of the job does not seem to me to be a natural for the highway superintendent in any kind of way, shape or form. Uh, unless the highway superintendent happens to be a gar, uh, an avid gardener in his time or something. I was just joking. But, but, so I, I wanted to clarify that those things play in this. Uh, because the, the first thing that somebody told me when this, that this was happening, they said, well, it should go, it's gonna go to the, to the highway superintendent. And that to me, that automatic assumption to me seems to be wrong.
So make one quick correction here. In the town of Plainfield, traditionally, the tree warden has been responsible for managing, cutting, managing street trees. That is not specifically in the statute. The statute requires that the tree warden to oversee the public shade tree law. It does not see that, say that the tree warden has to hire people to cut down those trees. The, the tree warden's job is essentially to make sure that public shade trees are protected and uh if, if they're damaged or dying, then to see that they are removed, not necessarily to remove them themselves. The highway department could still do all of that work and could, the budget for tree removal could still go to the highway department. But the tree warden is the person who essentially provides a permit to someone who wants to cut a public shade tree. And is oversees the public shade tree hearings. So, we should be very clear that just because we have done something a, a particular way in Plainfield in the past in terms of the, in terms of the tree warden's uh job, doesn't mean we have to continue that. The tree warden has to follow what's in the statute. But the rest of it, in terms of who actually cuts down trees, who actually cares for trees and all of that, that can be, in, in, in most larger towns, uh, that's handled by the, by the Department of Public, Public Works. They're responsible for doing all of the tree work. But the tree warden is the person who holds the hearings to ensure that the public agrees with whatever actions are being taken on those public shade trees. So let's be clear that the, the, the tree ward role is specifically to manage those, to, to, to give approval for actions taken on the public shade tree, not necessarily to actually do the work. Okay, yes.
I have a question. It, it, does the statute say that the term is one year? Is there a way to make the term three years? Is there a procedural way?
I believe this, I believe it's in our town bylaw. I don't believe it's in the statute, but you could check that. Nope, it is in the statute.
No, okay. Chapter eighty-seven, no.
So, so maybe that's something that.
So we could absolutely at, at, at annual town meeting, uh, although it does not, you, the warrant does not say or take any other action relative thereto, so we, uh.
Well, somebody could try to bring that on.
Yeah, but on the annual town meeting, we would have a warrant article to, which would, which would amend the town bylaw to change it to three years. That would certainly be possible.
Fifty-two South Union, I am, I'm liking the idea of of a warrant article around the bylaw to make it a longer term, because I do think there's like getting up to speed. There's also a coordination role. So I started as your appointed broadband manager. And I have been deep into tree strategy uh, in terms of protecting the nearly two million dollars of fiber we have, that we own, that serves our town internet. And as we all saw, the damage of uh the most aggressive windstorm we've had in probably a decade, uh, just last week. So I think the tree warden needs to stay focused on the statute to protect the public around public shade trees. I think the public works and the broadband department need to work with the tree warden to have a strategy around how we're making sure that we don't experience roadblocks in five places in one day that threaten the, the, the health and safety of our community. I'm prepared to step up to do that work with whoever the highway bus is now and the future and whoever the, um, I just think it's a strategic thing that there's multiple roles here and we have to work together.
Thank you. Ed?
On the tree safety part, it's the town highway department has control of all safety of the highway. He thinks the tree is not safe, you may ask the town to give him money. There is a jail sentence.
Yeah, there's never enough money and there's a lot of work we have to do.
So that's why it's not our company.
Any other questions or comments on the article relative to whether we should uh have our elected tree warden become an appointed tree warden? Bearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the article, please raise your hand and say aye? All those opposed to the article, please raise your hand and say nay? Our, our passes unanimously. Article three, this uh requires a nine-tenth vote. So, let's, let's see if it's, let's see if it's uh unanimous, in which case we don't have to count. Article three, to see if the town will vote to transfer the amount of one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-six cents from the fiscal year twenty-five town council account to the prior year's bills account to pay the fiscal year twenty-four, November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three KP law invoice number one four five zero one nine. Okay, any questions or comments on this?
You always wanna pay the town council, so I'd love.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye? Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Point of interest. I've never been to a nine-tenth vote before.
It's, it's specifically transferring money from the current fiscal year to pay for something from previous fiscal years. The idea is the state does not want you doing this. The state really wants you paying your bills as they come due. So, um, is there any other business that, that comes, to come before this town, special town meeting? All in favor? Meeting adjourned.
Call the meeting order at eight twenty-four or twenty-three. We'd like to approve the minutes of the February eleventh meeting.
Quiet, please. You're talking, leave the room.
All in favor? Miscellaneous, Ever Source sent an email to select board as well as notifications in the mail to property owners who reside on or adjacent Ever Source condition. By the ways for upcoming vegetation work. Uh, annual reports are due, warrants signed, and Peter has something to talk.
Okay. Peter LaPointe, fifty-three South Union. I know how we love special town meetings. Um, we actually need to have another special town meeting as soon as we can schedule it because the uh, Energy Committee got the grant to do the geothermal system for this building. And in order for us to gap fund, the amount of money we need to convert what will be a reimbursement from the federal government, uh, we need to have that money in hand. Because the uh thirty percent of the amount that we need is gonna be a tax refund that we have to file after the fiscal year of when we do the works. And if we can get the work done now, we can file that return in July. Which means then that we will have a, a reasonable chance of getting the money back. Because it is in a fiscal year that isn't impacted by. Because it is in a fiscal year that isn't impacted by any policies of the current administration might change the law. So there's an urgency for us to. To get this project started. And so we need a uh special town meeting with either. Transfer money from free cash or stabilization fund at the discretion of the finance committee. Consultation with the select board to have these funds available so that when we get the contract, we have the money to do. So it's really critical that we do that. And then at the same time, the buildings committee would like to. Uh, take some money from the account that was dedicated for repair of the Hallow Building. And allocate it for feasibility study to study the relocation of the town offices to the base town. So we have two articles that we'd like to have on the warrant. That would uh allow us to move forward on two critical projects. So uh, I think the strategy is to either uh. Have me submit the warrant articles. And then set the agenda motion from there, you know, uh, and I can send those to you so you can preview. It up, because it's really urgent. And and the other piece is that if we wait, the cost of the. Uh, equipment of what is already gone up ten percent, twelve percent from when we priced the job out and waited for the grant to be approved from this thing. So. Every day we wait, it's costing us money. Paul?
Yes, um, Ben, Brett Treasurer, they spoke with me in today. And if this subject came up tonight, who's with them, who wants to be able to be here with the board to talk about that?
Okay.
So that would suggest you need to invite him maybe for the next slide board meeting?
Yes.
If you're gonna bring your warrant articles forward? Okay.
We did meet Ben, that was his suggestion.
You you did, but he also today said it this night, he wanted to be. One who's discussed with them.
So uh, I request I'm on the next agenda and will. Will continue to meditate. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Peter. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Next call.